I'd like to convene this work session of the Williamsburg James City County School Board and call the meeting to order. Item 2.02, actually before we begin our work, I just want to remind everybody that we have a microphone to pick up sound for the recording that will be posted on the website, but not one that is able to project into the gallery. So we have a lot of guests with us today, so if everybody could please speak up, that would be wonderful. So, item 2.02, certify in closed session. Could I have a motion, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
May I have a second, please? Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passed. Certification passed. That brings us to item 3.01, the roll. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Item 3.02, approval of the agenda. Mr. Kelly, may I have a...
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented with the modification of moving the action items, section nine, to in front of the proposed action items, section six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion to approve the modified agenda has been first and seconded. Is there any... Did I ask for a discussion already?
Yes, good.
I'm sorry. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Item 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report.
Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair. Recently Skull Candy donated 50 brand-new pairs of headphones to North Elementary. Over 620 students will use this equipment in the school's computer lab and library. With the donated headphones, students can listen to eBooks, conduct research, create multimedia presentations, and much more. Thank you to Skull Candy for this generous donation. Female students from Berkeley and Hornsby Middle Schools were able to attend a special showing of the movie Hidden Figures, thanks to a partnership between Berkeley Middle School and NASA. At the showing, an all-female NASA panel spoke to students about opportunities in science, math, and engineering. One of the panelists, Crystal Johnson, Deputy Center Director at Goddard Space Flight Center, encouraged these young ladies to apply for internship programs with NASA to further their studies. Later tonight, the Board will consider a resolution commending principles for their work, and I'd like to take a moment to share my personal thanks with WJCC's amazing principals. Principals serve as educational leaders at our schools and have a significant impact on the success of our school division. Thank you, principals, for all of the hard work you dedicate every day to make WJCC great. And I believe we have one or two principals in the audience this evening. And finally, February is School Board Appreciation Month. School Board members develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues that impact the entire community. Please know that I value your time and commitment to this school division. You make it the best that it can be, and I thank you for your dedication. Madam Chair, those are all of the announcements I have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Do any other school board members have any announcements? If not, that moves us to item 5.01, citizens' comments. Ms. Hummel.
This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the Board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The Board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the Board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I do have a timer. Oh, excellent. So I thought if you have that one, I can give this to the speaker. Okay. You know, like have it in front of them. Does that work? Sure, absolutely. Because we don't have a... Is that... All right. So while you're operating that...
All right.
Mrs. Taylor?
Philip Kennedy. Hi, good evening. My name is Philip Kennedy. I live in Upper County and the Stonehouse District. I'm here tonight to express some concerns. One concern being the disproportionate amount of suspensions of minority youth at DJ Montague. Blacks make up 18% of the population at DJ Montague, but they make up 73% of the short-term suspensions at that school. My second concern deals with James River, the IB program. The IB program has been in existence for close to 10 years. We've allocated over $1 million to that program in the 10 years' time. We have no tracking data. We have no idea how the kids do once they leave James River. So we are investing money, but we don't know how that money is benefiting our community other than to say we have an IB program. I Googled IB elementary schools in the state of Virginia. Eight schools came up. James River scores are the seventh lowest scores out of those eight schools. We have the lowest SOL scores for that school, but yet that is our IB school. In addition to that, I've mentioned before to the Board about the disproportionate amount of discipline that occurs at James River, being that James River has more disciplinary infractions than seven of our other elementary schools combined. I know last year, fiscal year 2016, we allocated $115,000 to James River, but it is time that we take a look at how we spend money into a program that we are not tracking and get the benefits from that program. Those are my concerns with that school. I do think we need to take a look at it. I know that school has over 60% free and reduced lunch population there, and at least 83% participate in that program. So for those reasons, we definitely need to take a look at how we're allocating resources to our elementary schools, and if we are truly getting the biggest bang for our buck by continually having an IB program there that ranks seventh out of the eight IB schools in elementary schools in Virginia, and we continue to get the lowest SOL scores at that school. So I would definitely like the Board to take a look at that. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeanette Gordon Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm really not going to speak three minutes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. We do appreciate you. We appreciate your willingness to work with us. I'm here representing the village again tonight. My concern, once again, continues to be the minority achievement gap, and how it continues in double digits, and ways to go about eliminating that. I heard the numbers that Philip just read off to you, Mr. Kennedy just read off to you. We're hoping that we can do something about that. We're very hands-on with the village, and we are working in partnership. There is a program that I am heading up at James River Elementary School called Girl Power. We meet once a month, more often now if I want to, and we are instrumental in helping them to put together their career day this year. We're thinking that if there are more teachers of color, more teachers of diversity, because there seems to only have been, I think, if I have my numbers right, I think there's only one person who's a minority who's at or in a classroom at James River Elementary School. It will affect the way children learn, not just minority children, but children of the majority as well. They know that when they leave school, when they graduate, matriculate within this system, that they will be encountering a society that is very diverse. It will help to eliminate implicit biases when you go to school, and we can get rid of a generation of people who think that people of color, people who are different from them, different religions, different races, can achieve at the same rate that everybody else does. We're hoping that our impact will... We're hoping that our presence will have an impact and make an impact at James River. When we're asking that one Friday, some of you come down and join us for Girl Power at James River Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jackie Williams.
All right. Denise Koch.
Cook.
Chairman Cook, members of the Board, Dr. Heron. I am here this evening, and I had the privilege of actually sitting in your seats for eight years, or maybe not the privilege, depending on the issue, but I understand that you are intending to and have been on the search for a new leader for the school division, a new superintendent. And I just want to just give my support to you all as you finish the process. I also want the quote, "A very wise person," that I heard talk about marriage as a relationship, that it wasn't so much finding the right person as being the right person. And I want to urge the Board to be the right person for whomever you select as superintendent. They are going to depend on you to be their eyes and ears in the community, at James River, everywhere else, and to advocate, but they are also going to need your support and oversight. So I was just here tonight to provide my support and to encourage you and to give you the best wishes for your selection.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Want to get your phone back? Great idea. Thank you very much, all the speakers, for being here this evening. And that brings us to action items. First one being 9.01, appointment of a superintendent. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair, it is my privilege and pleasure to move that the Board appoint Dr. Olwin Heron, Superintendent of the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools, for a term commencing February 8, 2017, and ending June 30, 2020, and the Chair and the Clerk be authorized to execute a contract with Dr. Heron, a copy of which is to be attached for the minutes of this meeting.
May I have a second, please? Second. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say a few words here, that I am very excited to have a leader of Dr. Heron's ability and background lead our schools. Dr. Heron earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Liverpool in England, a master's degree from the Queen's University in Northern Ireland, and her doctorate degree from Regent University in Virginia Beach. She came to the United States in 1994 as part of the Fulbright Teacher Exchange Program as an English teacher in Tulsa, Oklahoma. She enjoyed leadership so much that she arranged to stay and achieved U.S. citizenship in 2010. Dr. Heron has almost 20 years of classroom teaching experience and was twice named her district's Teacher of the Year. Her administrative experience includes High School Assistant Principal in Tulsa, Oklahoma, Coordinator of Leadership Development, and Director of Accountability and Organizational Development in Virginia Beach. I just have to say one thing. I went to an Equity Conference this summer, and Dr. Heron was one of the leaders of that conference, and it was a regional conference, I think. And so they go through the list of the conference leaders, and everybody gets a polite applause until it gets to Dr. Heron, which I was really kind of taken aback by that ovation since she had left Virginia Beach, so, almost 10 years ago. So that was quite impressive to me. She was Chief Academic Officer and Chief Accountability Officer in Fort Bend, Texas, before finally coming to Williamsburg James City County a little over four years ago. I personally remember how excited Dr. Constantino was with her hire and when she came on board, and it has been a pleasure to have you here. Those are all my comments at the moment.
Any other comments or discussion? All right. I would like to just start by thanking our consultants. And Ms. Sarza, you did yeoman's work to help us out in this process, so thank you. Our consultants were excellent. You were even more so. You did tremendous amount of work to make this search happen and be successful. And all the staff members who also helped us at the end with a lot of clerical work that has to happen to make this effort come to fruition. I also want to thank all of you as colleagues. You were amazing throughout this process. I was incredibly impressed with the amount of work and thought and attention to detail that you put into this effort. I'm incredibly proud to be part of this body because of all of you. To the community, you all know Dr. Heron because she's served as our active superintendent for the last six months, and prior to that, she was our deputy superintendent for four years. During her time here, Dr. Heron has distinguished herself as a leader with integrity, deep instructional knowledge, and a keen understanding of quality systems and performance management. She is well-suited to provide stability for this division while simultaneously facilitating turning visionary ideas into reality. So I'm delighted to vote in support of Dr. Heron as superintendent of this division. Any other discussion or comments? If there are none, it has been moved and seconded to appoint Dr. Heron as Superintendent of WJCC schools. Will you call the roll, please, Ms. Sarza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Completely yes.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Dr. Heron, congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I am truly honored to be given the opportunity to serve as superintendent of schools. In the last six months, I have often said to colleagues that I'm living my dream, and tonight, my dream to lead Williamsburg James City County Schools has come true. Thank you. I won't be perfect, and I will make some mistakes, but I can assure you that I will lead with integrity. I will keep students at the center of every decision, set high expectations, and continue to value and appreciate our staff who are so dedicated to their work. I do want to take a moment to thank the members of my leadership team for their support over the last six months. They have taken on additional responsibilities to keep us moving forward in the interim, and I truly appreciate and thank you for that. Thank you also for your incredible support as a school board. I know, having worked closely with you, that we have much in common moving forward, a desire to ensure student success, to create a rewarding workplace for all staff, and to make Williamsburg James City County Schools the best in the nation. I look forward to working with you in the months and years ahead to do just that. I wish to publicly thank the many people within WJCC and in the wider community who have emailed, texted, called, or popped by to encourage me to apply for this position. Your confidence in me is one of the reasons why I'm here today. Finally, I'm excited about the future of this school division, because I know collectively we are already engaging students, personalizing learning, reimagining high school, making education relevant, and developing good citizens for the future. It is a really important job, and we are doing it together. Thank you again. I look forward to spending time with you, the schools, and community very soon. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, that brings us to item 9.02, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Approval of personnel actions has been moved and seconded. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. That brings us to item 9.03, approval of minutes corrected from January 3, 2017. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Ombi, can you move a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes amended.
Excellent. A second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. No discussion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the corrected minutes from January 3. Will you call the roll?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Action item 9.04, resolution and appreciation of WJCC principals. Dr. Heron, you've already spoken about this a little bit. Would you like to add anything?
Just to say that we appreciate the incredible job that our principals do every day in our schools. They are the instructional leaders of the building. They manage the building. They are there for students. They are there for teachers, and our school system wouldn't be what it is without them.
Thank you for that introduction. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of resolution and appreciation of WJCC principals.
Can I have a second? All right. Can all the principals that are here stand up? Any discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution of appreciation of WJCC principals. Ms. Sarza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item 6.01, high school band uniforms. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're bringing forward for your consideration the approval of new band uniforms. Band uniforms are replaced every 10 years, and the uniform replacement cycle is in your agenda. Item Jamestown High School last purchased uniforms in 2005, Lafayette High School in 2006, and Warhol High School in 2007. It is our standard practice to replace uniforms every 10 years.
Any questions for Dr. Heron or comments?
Dr. Heron, the amount of money that's been allotted for band uniforms, is that enough to cover the cost of...
I'm going to ask Mr. Paula to answer questions about the uniforms. I think most of it, but not all, but she brings all the details to you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. Sorry, you have to pardon my voice. We're a little bit forced to do this. The $120,000 that you allotted covers the majority of the items. School Performance has budgeted the additional $16,000 and change for the complete uniforms. They really weren't skinny. They ordered what they wanted. There are slight things that they've put off for the future, for example, garment bags that we're going to be able to order a little bit later on, not a huge expense, but they've gone through the process. They're quite happy with the uniforms that they're going to be ordering. And we didn't allot equal amounts. We divvied up the money so that the largest band would have the opportunity to spend as much... Jamestown is the largest band, just cover their uniforms. It actually turned out that they're all relatively close in the amount per uniform, so we are in good position to afford, and hopefully you guys will... The Board will approve the board of the band uniforms. Excuse me. Hopefully that you'll approve the band uniforms at our next meeting.
Dr. Paula, so did each school get enough for the numbers of students they have in their band, and then was there any extra in case they grew?
Yeah, there's a 15% additional.
Okay, so there's room?
There is room for growth.
For growth.
There's room for growth, and also if a band, you know, enlarges significantly, then obviously we'll make sure that student has a uniform of the time, but they're like 15% at this moment in time. Also, the old band uniforms will be put up for auction. There may be some money from that will go towards the extra, like the housing bill I'll get or might not.
And then each of the high school band directors, they were the decision-makers? They selected the uniforms?
I think that they worked collaboratively with members of their band, and yes, they ultimately ran.
That's great. Yep. Thank you.
I just have a question. The band uniforms that may be put up for auction, what kind of shape were they in?
They vary. Obviously, they're 10, 12 years old, so they're...
That's fine. Thank you.
I'm sure that Mrs. Berto will assist us in selling whatever we can.
Okay, thank you. Put them on eBay.
Mr. Paula, thank you for your heroic effort in coming and talking to us tonight. And for whoever has to go behind you, they're just thankful you're not speaking into a mic.
As I've said, I'm not contagious.
Feel better.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we put this on the consent agenda? I don't need to talk about this at the next meeting.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Ms. Sarza, can we put that on the agenda? If there are no more questions, we'll move on to item 6.02, renaming of Rawlsburg Elementary School. The idea is to put this on our agenda at the next meeting for action, and so I'm hoping that as a result of today's discussion, we can come to consensus that then could turn into a motion for the next meeting. We heard at the last meeting a report from the committee, which was really quite wonderful and thorough, and they recommended three names. Sarah G.B. Jones, Glass House, and Laurel Lane. So now the ball is in our court, so we are not compelled to be limited to those three names, but that's the work of the group that came to us, so I hope that we'll spend some time discussing those and come to a place where we can take action. So also, I wanted to point out that whatever action we take, probably we want to make effective July 1 of 2017, so that the school division can then begin to take action in the next fiscal year. So with that, I'm curious if there's any discussion or comment. Ms. Ombi, do you have any?
Sure. My thoughts are based on the presentation, which was wonderful, and it was a lot of work involving community and students, parents, that I think one of the third graders summed it up best to me. Laurel Lane, it just rolls off the tongue. That was the student's choice. For me, the division has gone back and forth over the years with whether or not to name our schools after individuals, and I think if we were going to select a person, I personally would prefer a Williamsburg person, but I personally am not in favor of naming schools after people, because we've gone back and forth, back and forth with that. The school has been 51 years. It's been on Laurel Lane. The students are behind it. Glass House was an idea, but the school is not anywhere near Jamestown, really, and the idea that it's connected to the development of Glass didn't really do anything for me. So I defer to the students who are invested in that name. I think it's a great name.
Ms. Young?
Yes, I agree with much of what she said. First of all, Sarah G.B. Jones is better known in Richmond than here, and I would have preferred somebody that was... If we were going to select somebody that who was going to the school, was going to be named after, I would have preferred a local person. I like the name Laurel Lane, but I also like the name of Glass House because of the historical nature of it and the fact that it would give us and maybe give the students in the school an opportunity to develop a relationship between the National Park Service and that arena. So I'm leaning towards Glass House, but I'm not against Laurel Lane.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I agree, Ms. Ombi, that I'm real... I was really drawn to that, and it does roll off the tongue, and there are lots of schools all around the country are identified by their geographical location, and I would very much support that.
Ms. Hummel? I agree with the other comments about Jones Elementary, just that there's no real connection to Williamsburg, per se, and I guess if I were to say my first choice, it would be Laurel Lane, second choice would be Glass House, and third choice would be Jones Elementary. The only thing about Laurel Lane that I'm wondering is whether have we thought about the possibility of calling it Laurel Elementary at the end of Laurel Lane? At the end of Laurel Lane, it's just a thought, it was just like, instead of naming the school after a street, you name it... I mean Laurel Lane was named after a laurel, and so possibly you could have it be Laurel Elementary, which is located on Laurel Lane. It's just a different way of, of looking at it, but...
Different way of rolling off the tongue.
It's a different way of rolling off the tongue. It's just like when you think of, is the elementary school located on Laurel Lane because it's Laurel Elementary? Anyway, that's just... And I like Glass House because I also kind of like the idea of having a stonehouse and a glasshouse. So those are my top two.
The arrival of...
Mr. Kelly, do you have any thoughts?
I like the name Laurel Lane, I think that's, that was a good compromise. I am not adverse to naming schools after people, particularly historic figures. I think it shows, and I would also say people who have a connection to Williamsburg. I think it gives a historical context to the schools and is an important part of the culture. I don't want to, it seems, I'm concerned that naming them only after geographical features is the next step to naming it PS 1 through 14, and I don't really want to go there. I like, I like the color of naming it for, for people, but we shouldn't name every school for people, and so we're not going to have that problem in anywhere in the near future. So I am in favor of Laurel Lane. I should also would like, in order to avoid revolt at Rawlsburg, I think we should affirm the Penguin. I think they are much more connected to the Penguin than they are to the name. So I think we should make sure that they understand that the Penguin is going to remain, so are my feelings.
Absolutely, I fully support the Penguin. I don't think we have any authority.
So, because the past... So are you suggesting the board take action on that? Because the last two schools we have been, those were left, the mascot and colors were left to the school, as I understand it. So do we want, do we just want to, we want to state publicly that...
That they give it to Penguin, it ain't on me, that's what I'm, I'm making sure they understand that.
State publicly that...
So, but I, I like the Penguin. Penguins are...
Duly noted.
Reminds me of Lila.
I'm sorry, has the school, you know, they made the decision they want to keep... Yeah, so I would affirm their decision, that's what I, yeah, I support their decision to stick with the walking bird.
In the presentation last, last board meeting, they very much were in favor of the Penguin, and the committee and the school want to keep Penguin, so I don't think there's any chance of the Penguin going away.
So perhaps we can note in the minutes that the school board affirms the Penguin. Ms. Taylor, do you have anything to add?
I very much agree with the majority of the board on this. I've been leaning towards Laurel Lane as well, big fan of alliteration, so I think we need to keep the lane.
Okay.
And thank you to the committee for all that work.
So if I hear, if I hear correctly, the consensus of the board is to have Laurel Lane Elementary. Having worked as a potter in this community for nearly two decades, I would probably get in trouble if I didn't at least say I liked Glass House. I, my vote is with Laurel Lane as well, or will be. But we do have some people, several people in our community who worked at the Glass House. At least one I know was a glass blower there, and now is a teacher of ours at Jamestown High School. So there is a connection to our schools and that Glass House that I treasure, and really is part of the rich fabric of our, of the creative part of our community. But we'll move forward with Laurel Lane for the next meeting, and effective July 1st, 2017. We'll affirm that, all right. Thank you. That brings us to item 6.03, appointments to Special Education Advisory Committee. This is a board prerogative per our policies. And as our representative to that board, Ms. Ombi, do you have anything to share, or are you...
We have three applicants. The, our Special Education Advisory Committee currently has eight members. They have been working for some time to increase enrollment and membership, membership on a moment. Our, the current chair has done some research, most CACs across the Commonwealth have around 15. So that was kind of the number that they were hoping to eventually build in membership. One of the things that I think Dr. Beers recommended at some point recently was the rolling appointments, which we don't generally do, it's generally annual. So the feeling of CAC is once they get to that, that number of 15, that they'll go back to just annual appointments. So they're looking, trying to build membership. So I would recommend that we move to appoint those three. It gets them closer to their goal of having a complete and full membership.
Any discussion?
I'm, I'm okay with, with this, I just, you know, in the, in the future, I would like to, you know, this is kind of an unusual thing, I would like to make sure that we do this according to our, our policy and our, our normal procedure, that we do this during our normal times, and not have, get in the habit of going to a special, to a special appointment roster. I fully support CAC, I want them to be successful, I want them to have appropriate representation, and to have a cross-section of the community. I just want to make sure this is an anomaly and not stable for the moment.
And I, and just a point of order to help me, since I'm new in so many capacities, I was, what exactly was done?
So there are earlier policy prohibited appointing anyone except for in October, applications in September, appointments in October. At Dr. Beers' request, after his experience serving on CAC last year, the recommendation was to alter that policy, make it clearer to allow that. But to, you know, to Mr. Kelly's point, depending on how that goes, the board may, you know, has the option, of course, of looking at that policy and going back to the original way, which is, I think, a little bit more standard across the Commonwealth. But for now, if it's working, you know...
So I guess that's my question, so the policy was actually changed, so we would need to change it back to the way it was? Or there was just an exception that said for a period of time, we'll continue to kind of have these rolling appointments?
The policy now has a prerogative that you, that the board can make in a midterm or a different, and the point at different times of the year. Before, it was that you'd only appoint it in September, and then the next opportunity would be the next September.
And you could only appoint mid-year if there was a resignation to fill an existing spot, but not to grow a committee, so we changed that to allow for that.
Right, and I think the feeling of CAC is right with you, like once, once they're able to get to a point, then they have stable membership, they would go back to the way it's consistent with all the other appointments.
So we'll put that on the agenda for action next meeting. Okay, item 6.04, board compensation. So I, we put this on the agenda because this is a year in which the board can consider this issue. We cannot consider it every year, but this year we can because two elections are taking place in the fall. So if the board chooses to move forward with this discussion, a vote would have to take place before July 1st. However, now seems like a good time, so that the localities can have enough time to include any increases in their budget, should that happen. So just wanted to explain the timing of why this is on the agenda now. So if the, if the board decides to move forward with this conversation, the James City County Board would have to convene. Mrs. Taylor would preside, and that would likely take place at the beginning or end of a subsequent meeting. And any action that the James City County Board would take would convey automatically to the City of Williamsburg Board. So, does anyone have any questions about procedure before we go into the discussion of, of actual content? Okay, all right, Mr. Kelly, I'm going to toss it to you.
Okay. School board compensation, right now, the regular members are, Janet, you might have to help me with this, 5,000?
500.
5,500 a year, the chair is at 6,600 a year. That compens, that was set in 2005, and has remained the sta, remained the same since then. The Board of Supervisors for James City County, by contrast, makes 10,500, I think, for their compensation. We brought this up last year for consideration, until we had the wisdom of the General Assembly explain to us that we could only do it when 40% of the board was up for election. I believe we had to vote by July 1st, and then it doesn't take, doesn't take effect until January 1st of 2018. When you look at our comparative districts, York County, I think, I don't have the numbers on top of my head, but I think York County Board makes somewhere 9,000, thank you, Ms. Taylor, makes 9,000, makes 9,000 a year, with the chair making 10,200, according to the Daily Press, which must be true. If you look at compensation for the school board compared to other schools in the, in the Commonwealth, particularly by enrollment, our, our numbers are significantly lower than the rest of the schools. So I think, I can't remember the number that we looked at last year that was under consideration. I want to say it was somewhere near 8,000, 8,500, I believe, was what we were looking at next year, which still puts us lower than, than our neighboring school systems. Still actually puts us in the lower, lower part of school systems with like enrollments as well. I was just, I'll just throw that number out there on the table, it's something that we should consider.
Ms. Cook, I have, I looked at the information that we were presented. I want to make sure I understand the figures for the James City County Board of Supervisors, because I see, I see two figures, and all I could think of with JS is James City Service Authority.
Yeah, the water, yeah, the water, water service and the sewer service, yeah.
If you're on the, if you're on the Board of Supervisors, you were also on the Board of the James City Service Authority.
Ah, okay, okay.
Go to the James City Service Authority Board, and then the other numbers for Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I just, my feeling is, considering the size of our budget, doing more of our students, I think the board's compensation ought to be, should be equal to the Board of Supervisors. And maybe less that, that's why I asked that question about the... Although that, it's still really, it is low, because that would, that would make the board members at 7,000, which, considering the size of our school and our budget, that, that's low. My, Jim, is that compared to... Yeah, and I, it's been 11 years, and the district has grown a lot in 11 years, and so... I, yeah, I would, I would be looking at between, I think, eight and nine for board members, and nine and 10 for chairs.
It's a, at the end of the day, this is a very difficult conversation, because none of us came to this board because of the compensation. And, and whatever the compensation number, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, for the, if you want to go on a per hourly basis, if you want to go about the number of days I miss work, if you want to do all that, it, none of it makes up that difference. It's, it's more of just a fair and just and equitable situation from, from my perspective. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know, Jim, how you feel about 8,500 or, or what, but it's, you know, it's just one of those fair and equitable conversations.
Anybody else?
I think it is a difficult conversation to have, because we're asking for money. I think it's, it's hard. But I think for the amount of time that we spend, I mean... It's hard to even imagine how much time we spend on this. So I guess other people need to respond, because I, I, with Mr. Beers on this, which we need to, we have to have more than...
And the, you know, I talked to, talked to members of the public, I talked to, you know, other elected officials, and, I mean, I really get no pushback on that, I mean, this, I mean, when, when people ask what we do, you know, how much work it is, and then what we get paid, and they're like, are you crazy? And it comes, it still comes back to the end of the day, that we don't do this for any kind of compensation. We do this because we care about the, the education of our, of our children in our community, and we care about our community, and... So it tends to be a difficult conversation, so... Anyway, I guess there's three members of the James City County School Board who have spoken up in favor. Guess that's enough for a consensus. Maybe Mrs. Taylor to schedule a meeting at some point, or, I don't know what the, what your, what the protocol and plan for that is.
I would recommend scheduling a meeting to convene either before or after our next regularly scheduled meeting on the 21st. And then, Julie, Kelly, you could preside, and I could work with Dr. Heron and Ms. Serra to, you know, to put that in the agenda, but, and then it would be up to the James City County Board to come up with a, an action item, a proposed action item.
Okay. But you and Ms. Taylor, be here dutifully.
So, any thoughts, any board members? Are we going to wait until we have this?
Well, I mean, the only, the only thing, I don't, I don't feel like as a city member, I...
Can we hear from the other two county members?
What I was going to say, though, is that, like, like Jim, when we did consider this last year, I will tell you that... I didn't, I did talk to elected officials prior, because prior to knowing that we were not able to take action last year, and there, I would echo what Mr. Kelly said, that there was no, no pushback of any kind. All right, so, all right, so we'll...
Look with Holly on the defense.
Okay, we'll schedule a James City County Board meeting, and Julie and I will watch you.
From the audience.
Yep, no, yeah. Okay, seven point, agenda item 7.01, draft 2017-18 school year calendar. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Every year, we review the draft calendar for the next school year, and the Superintendent State has been leading and commending, the Calendar Committee this year, and is going to present their recommendations to you this year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, newly appointed superintendent, Dr. Heron. Tonight, I'm going to present you the work of the Calendar Committee. The calendar parameters are very set by state code. We are required to start after Labor Day unless we meet one of several waivers, which we do not meet. The first one is being closed an average of eight days per year during any of the five last 10 years due to weather or other unforeseen emergency situation. If you look at where we have been over the last five years, we do not meet that particular waiver requirement of the state. While we've missed many days, we do not meet that waiver. One thing to note, that Fairfax County will be, they met the waiver requirements for missed days, so in 1718, they will be opening prior to Labor Day.
There are very few school divisions east of 95 that meet the waiver.
Oh, correct.
Is that fair?
Correct.
That would be on this way.
Tidewater, all of Tidewater, unless they have a special program, does not meet the waivers. Another one of the waiver opportunities is being surrounded... Another one of the waiver opportunities is being surrounded by school divisions who meet the waiver. That does not apply to us because Tidewater again is pretty much, we're all starting after Labor Day. There are also a couple of other options to receive a waiver, the instructional programs partnership with a school division who has qualified, or if we're doing an experimental or innovative program that is offered on a year-round basis that would require an earlier opening date. Those are the two, the three other possible waivers. At this time, we do not meet any of those.
Was there something going through the General Assembly?
I think it did not, did it not?
Every year.
Never, yeah, it did not.
Never.
Never.
And for those of you who haven't looked, you do have a manila bind folder in front of you that has this presentation in it. So, our calendar parameters are to start the day after Labor Day. We are required by state code to have a hundred and eighty instructional days. We have no school on Election Day in WJCC because most of our schools are used as polling places and we try to be in alignment with the regional calendar, which is the other peninsula school divisions plus foster. And we have a four-hour minimum requirement on early release days. We do not have half-days in the calendar, we have early release days so we can meet that minimum requirement. So with those parameters in mind, the Calendar Committee met, we have representatives from nine schools, the central office, the WJCEA and the WJCCPTA on that committee. We met once in December and then we gathered feedback from our constituencies about a number of issues. The teachers and staff on the committee really did go back and ask specific questions, mostly relating to parent conferences and back-to-school night and open house, and we received some very good feedback that was shared with principals. Then we also had the Regional Calendar Committee that met in November and January and the superintendents additionally all discussed the regional calendar that their new horizons needed. So jumping right ahead, our proposed calendar is to start with open house at the end of August, August twenty-ninth, thirtieth and thirty-first. Our first day of school will be September fifth. Currently, elementary back-to-school night is scheduled for October fifth. We do not have a secondary back-to-school night on the calendar. We have secondary parent conferences scheduled for October seventeenth at the high schools and October nineteenth at the middle schools. Election Day is November seventh and Thanksgiving for this proposed calendar, we have the typical three-day break, November twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And as I run through this, if you have any questions about that specific slide, please don't hesitate to stop me. Winter break, we have scheduled for December twenty-first through January first. Martin Luther King Day is a holiday, January fifteenth. President's Day is a holiday, February nineteenth. Spring break is the first full week in April, April second through sixth. Memorial Day is a holiday, May twenty-eighth. The last day of school would be June fourteenth and graduation would be Saturday, June sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. In our calendar, we have a number of early release days. They're primarily related to professional development and workdays for teachers. We also, at the elementary level, have parent conferences that have early releases tied to them. So October twentieth, October twenty-seventh, November fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth. We have an early release tied to winter break, K-12, December twentieth, and then exams at the ninth and twelfth grade levels, January twenty-fourth through twenty-fifth. Now typically, that would have included middle school. Since middle schools do not have semester exams, we have taken those early release dates off of the calendar and they are only applying to grades nine through twelve. So that is a change this year. We also have early release days in March, March second and sixteenth. April nineteenth is parent conferences, K-5. June eighth is grade reporting, K-5. June eleventh and twelfth is exams nine through twelve and June thirteenth is exams six through twelve. The last day of school is an early release day, June fourteenth, K-12. Now, as you know, our teachers report before our students, so we do have a number of workdays and professional development days before the start of school. New teachers will report on August twenty-first. All teachers will report on August twenty-third. And then we have a number of professional development days through the end of August. You will note that we have several that are AMPM and then they are also now designated as building-based. If it is not Division One students, that also will be on the calendar.
What is non-core PD?
It is professional development for teachers who are not English, Math, Science and Social Studies. Go me.
Excellent. Thank you.
You studied for that? I did. We also have a number of workdays before the start of school, also through August and then September first. The days that are August twenty-ninth, thirtieth and thirty-first, those are tied to the open houses. So if you have an open house on a date, you have a workday instead of a professional development day. Once school starts, we have professional development and workdays in October and March. Those are professional development, early release days. And then no-school workdays, two of those are designated as e-commute. On November seventh, January twenty-sixth, January twenty-ninth, March thirtieth and June fifteenth. June fifteenth is the last workday before graduation, June sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So by, a question about the e-commute. So, the teachers are, is there, there is an expectation they will be working remotely for their, how does that work?
That has been the practice for a period of time. It was covered for a couple of years and we were requiring teachers to come to the building to do work with the, in teams in the building, but it was decided to go back to e-commute for teachers last year.
So we have a total of, if I add it right, five days for professional development. I added that.
If you look in your packet, you have another handout. It's a chart that adds up all of the professional development days, early release days, workdays.
Yeah, I added up the, the ones that are on the professional development.
It's the one that looks like this.
Yeah, that's what I was, so is that five whole days? Five days.
I'm sorry, for professional development? So for elementary professional development, they will have six days. Middle school will also have six and high school will have six total. That includes full days, half-days, including complication.
Oh, York County complication is professional development.
Yeah, so it's all together, the early release is considered in that number as well. Those are all professional development. For workdays, there are eight each.
Yeah, there are two professional development, partial days, early release and there's a couple of hours of professional development, the rest are all school days.
Our marking periods, we try to keep those pretty even. We do run into some problems with holidays, but they're forty-five to forty-two to forty-eight And then our proposed interims are middle and high school interims and they, we try to center those on the marking period as well. We do have several designated makeup days in our proposed calendar. We do have an option to make one of them January twenty-ninth instead of March thirtieth. That is to be determined. These makeup days would be used if we end up having a number of complement weather days.
Okay, so you have, what, is it for that or built in to this?
We have no built-in days. We're in a hundred and eighty-day calendar.
But do we have built-in days this year?
No.
Ouch.
We have banked hours, correct. So when we have a hundred and eighty-day calendar, that's required by the state, once we start missing days and no longer have a hundred and eighty-day calendar, we start counting hours. And that's where we have time, we have some banked hours.
Okay, so although we've missed, how many snow days have we had?
Three.
Three, so.
We're okay.
We're okay because we have in excess of.
Yes.
Of three days.
Worth of hours.
And two hours of.
It's different at each level, so there are more, yeah, I understand what you're saying. There are more at the high school level and middle school level than at, at elementary. Elementary is pretty tight, but then you also have to think about the instructional time list and that impacts whether a makeup day is designated as well as the number of hours to be banked.
At the elementary level, PE recess does not count as instructional time.
Nor does pastime at middle and high school.
So at high school level, a PE class counts as instructional time, so that's how the high schools get more hours than the elementary. So it's a, it's a little more, it's more like, more like calculus than it is like algebra.
It can get complicated.
Right.
So we just can't have any more snow days?
That would be my preference. I believe Dr. Heron agrees with that.
That would be my preference also.
So this doesn't change from the way it was last year as far as banked hours or anything like that?
No, the, the number of hours will remain the same. Actually, in middle school, we'll pick up some because those early release days are no longer on their schedule, but elementary and high will stay the same. Middle school will pick up a little bit.
And at the, at the end of the day, there's very little about the calendar that you can really change from year to year because of the wisdom of the General Assembly and the regional calendar. So if you tie yourself to those two, there's really very little latitude you have for out-of-school days. It's like the day before, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and then how you, how you play the, the winter break.
Right.
And as far as when you come back around New Year's, when you leave before Christmas. And that's really only a day or two that it's really kind of in play.
In some school divisions, they have one hundred and eighty-one, one eighty-two in the region, however, they don't have Election Day, for instance, where they have different PD days, professional development days than we do. But we try to, we try to keep the major holidays the same and have as many of the days the same across the region as possible.
And when you get to a consistency of the calendar is what, you know, there's, nobody really gets emotional about the calendar when you, when you ask the public, it's kind of, okay, what does it live to? But I believe that we, if we start going into keeping that consistency, the keeping that Wednesday and our winter break, that, you know, people adjust to it and get their, and get their holiday schedules arranged. And I think, I think that's the most important thing. The e-commute day is a benefit to the teachers. It generally, it occurs at the end of marking periods, so teachers are generally putting it in their grades during that time and so the, so, you know, e-commute day is, is something they actually do positive work and they, and they, and they get things done. So that, and that's, that's a real benefit for our teachers, that our teachers really appreciate being able to do that from the living room versus doing it, having to drive to, drive to the school and do that.
And some do come to the schools.
Some do come to the schools, right. So, I'm curious, and maybe this isn't a calendar question, so I, I don't want to belabor this, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to go back to that professional development. I noticed that there's only one full day per building all year. Is that, is that correct? I see BB once in each column.
For professional development?
Yeah, that's building-based.
There are, for that level, for middle school, that would be building-based, yes.
Where, I only see.
Eight twenty-nine.
Where, yeah, okay.
Eight twenty-nine is a full day. Elementary has a full day that is not building-based.
Oh, I know, that's what I, that's what I was saying. Each school has one full day, like in, the elementary schools have one full staff, you know, professional development day at the building, correct? And they do the same thing, and each middle school has one day in the building.
Yes, everybody has a building-based, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's, I'm curious, and maybe the principals, you know, they don't, they don't raise anything about that. Has there, has there ever been comments from principals about, we'd like a little more building-based time for that or not? That ever come out?
Not in the calendar.
Okay. Where would that, where would something like that come out?
Well, we can certainly ask that question. In prior years, we didn't have a very strategic, definitive professional development.
I know.
For the division.
I know, that's why.
And therefore to create some.
Those times are really.
And build some capacity, we, we have used a lot of division time. Having said that, for example, our, our division sponsored day in January was actually site-based at the individual site and was delivered by a team at the local site. So there's a lot of conversation and buy-in to much of the professional development that is happening and, and a lot of it is really used to drive and build capacity for division initiatives. However, time at the school with the particular needs of the school is very valuable as well. I don't understand that.
Can you talk for a second, Dr. Heron, about the feedback loop that you have in place for professional development that informs then this work?
Well, we do evaluate every single time we do professional development. We have a system that captures all of that. We review the evaluation, we make changes based on that and then every other year we do an annual professional development survey-type instrument where we get feedback on the quality and the relevance to teachers. And really try to, to use that as a way to continually monitor if we're meeting the needs of teachers in the classroom. It's not perfect, but, but we certainly have come a long way in asking for feedback and using that to make things better.
And the reason I, you know, I'm bringing this up is we are, we're in the process of making major curricular changes in all three of our high schools and, and I know that that's one of the, it is always an issue when you're making big curricular changes like that, that, that teachers want time to, you know, sort of understand it, get feedback. And, and I also know that that also goes on during the year as well. You know, I, I, it's not, it isn't like there's some magic to four days or five days. I know that stuff like that goes on in the middle of faculty meetings or stuff after school and, you know, so I, 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 I just, I don't want to lose sight of it. I just think, because I know those changes, we're, they're going to start, you know, it's like if you're, if we're going to get middle school students ready for those kinds of high schools, then we're going to have to make changes at the middle schools. If we make changes at the middle school level, then we've got to get those elementary students ready to do that. So, and I, and to me, it's really exciting, you know, it's really, I'm, I totally support the, you know, a lot of, a lot of our curricular changes, but I just want to make sure that, you know, there's sufficient time.
If I could give you one example, in our high schools, the professional development in January was totally focused on performance-based assessments. That is totally aligned with the innovation that's happening at high schools. When we did several years of assessment literacy and really built capacity to create valid assessments, teachers would have spent time learning and then would have spent time in teams actually applying the learning and coming back the next time to learn a bit more. So we've really taken to heart some of the feedback that we've had, that we don't just do one-day events that lead to nothing, but it's very sustained and it's growth over time to build capacity across the system.
That's, that's the answer. That's all I want.
We also have to be very cognizant of our teachers' time as well because because they prepare classrooms and prepare lesson plans. And they have, they need that time. And we can't just continue, you know, if we continue to add professional development hours into the school day, that just means they work later on the weekends and in the evenings in their classroom. And so we just need to make sure that we're, that we're cognizant of that balance and that struggle that occurs on demand of our teachers.
So what's next? So what's next is that we're going to send an all-staff email with the draft calendar. We also are going to post it on the division website and link it on Twitter and Facebook and provide an opportunity for people to put in their comments. There will be a comment box. We'll have it open probably for a couple of weeks and then share the information with the school board prior to your...
So then will we put it back on the work session for March and then for potential action?
That would be fine. That would work our time.
Does that work?
I think that gives time for community comments. And also, we still will have voted on it early enough to allow parents and families to plan vacations and things like that in the future.
And it'll just be open comments? I do think this is a better way to go about this than last year when there seemed to be some confusion. We were new school board members and there seemed to be some, a survey of do you like this or this? And when, in reality, we needed to follow the regional calendar. So there really isn't any need to have a survey to ask people, do you like this or this or this? When you really don't have the flexibility. So I appreciate the way you guys are going about it this year.
The document's in your folder for this. You have two different versions of the calendar. You also have one that's a couple for professional development and early release. And then you also have the eighteen nineteen planning calendar. That is for planning purposes only. You do not vote on that until next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any further questions before we move on? We'll see you in a few minutes. Okay, next is eight point zero two school board self-evaluation. It is humbled.
Okay, so we had, Dr. Beers did some legwork and came up with a model for us to, for the first time, I don't know, have we done this before? Okay, not in our tenure.
Not this board.
Not this board.
Not last year, but yeah, previous, yeah.
So anyway, it was a series of maybe five different classifications of questions. And we then put that into a Qualtric survey and had each board member anonymously fill out, complete the survey. And we now have the results of the survey. And it would be my recommendation that we look at the results of the evaluation and really talk about it in a, in a kind of a retreat format. That would be where we would look at what we felt good about, what we didn't feel good about, and have really open dialogue with each other in a retreat. But I, I open that up to everybody else.
All right, and I'd like to follow up with that and just say that I'm meeting with each of you, I think, in the next week or two, I think, with Dr. Heron and I are. And so I think that would be an opportunity to kind of glean from you what, what resonated so that we could help shape any upcoming retreats. So just as an opportunity to think about that.
Has been in the discussion as to who's going to facilitate the retreat?
No, we'll be seeking your thought on that, yeah. So any, any comments, thoughts before we go to the next? All right, then that sounds like an action plan. And then item eight point zero three, 2016 staff climate survey. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As part of our strategic plan, the board had requested that staff complete a climate survey. And Ms. Overcome Smith is going to provide some of the results of that survey tonight and provide some information of how the process of survey and what all that involved. We're probably going to tag team a little bit tonight and as Ms. Overcome Smith provides some of the data, I may make some comments about what we're doing in response to the data as we go through this report presentation tonight.
Here again, the staff survey, climate survey is a strategic plan deliverable 5.11.1 to conduct annual surveys. We are not conducting annual surveys of all three of those constituency groups, but we are conducting at least one survey annually. All staff were eligible to take this survey. We had a third party administrator for us, Panorama Education. This was a confidential but not anonymous survey. So every staff member was assigned a unique identifier, sent a unique email link, and then they could take the survey. Confidential but not anonymous. Now, what's important to note there is that Panorama will not give us access to any individual survey even if we ask. So this is a completely confidential survey. They also, we can break out the information by demographics. However, if the group is too small, they also will not provide us individual demographic information. The survey was administered October 31st through November 17th of 2016. Our participation rate was pretty good, 61% overall. We did have a difference between the percentages in teachers and staff, pretty substantive difference. Out of 1,827, we had 1,124 respondents. 678 were teachers and 446 were staff. There were four survey strands, parts to the survey. Feedback and coaching, school leadership, resources, and school climate. We also asked some other questions that were not associated with the strands. And we asked for future plan information just so we could divide things up via demographics of how long someone's planning to stay with the division. This survey is nationally benchmarked, which is one of the reasons we selected it. They have a great number of respondents' schools that have participated and taken these surveys in the past. And it is across a vast geographic area, school type achievement level. The benchmarks are not Virginia benchmarks. They are national benchmarks. We could not get a benchmark for the state. But that is something that we have alerted them to as a want for a future survey for us. So the scoring for the benchmark is based on percent favorable. When you have a five-question or five possible options survey, the top two choices are generally considered favorable. And that is how Panorama developed their benchmarks. What you're going to see is a graph, it's a distribution graph, that shows you the most frequent scores nationally benchmarked and then also provides us a line with our score. And these were for three of our four strands. They do not have a benchmark for resources. Not enough people have taken that strand yet. That will be something that we'll be able to benchmark in the future. So looking at our numbers, for feedback and coaching, our score is 33% favorable, the top two selections, which is in the 30th percentile. What's important to note about that percentile is that it's rounded to the nearest 10th. School climate benchmark, our score is 50%, which is the 20th percentile. School leadership is 51%, which is the 20th percentile. And again, there is not a benchmark for resources. What we found when we were looking at our survey results is that a number of our staff members selected the neutral option. 26 to 46% of our, of our staff members, depending on the question, with an average of 31%, picked some, sometimes, somewhat. So they picked the neutral choice and that is not depicted in the benchmarks. So to give us a clearer picture of what this survey is actually telling us as a baseline, we felt it was important to include that neutral number in our reporting and how we disaggregated the data. So we have by-strand result charts that I'm going to go through. Each chart includes a percentage for each answer choice. Also, since these were scaled questions, they're measured both positive and negative options. We also have assigned values to each option with five being most favorable and one being most unfavorable. So for instance, our valued scores for the four strands are, out of a five-point scale, feedback and coaching, 2.95, resources, 3.32, school climate, 3.38, and school leadership, 3.35.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So the, we had the, the survey scoring is, oh, sorry. For the scoring, it's the, the top two, right?
Yes.
So all of the benchmarks that we've got here are for the, the top two.
Right.
And then...
And that's the percentage that's provided there as well as the benchmark where we land nationally.
Okay. So was there a, so when you say the neutral, you're just giving, you're just providing us the neutral information?
Yes.
Just because we didn't have that?
Because it wasn't benchmarked, we felt it was very important to give you the whole picture especially since such a high percentage of our employees picked some. Some is not negative or positive. And depending on the question, it can be positive with room to grow. So since there was such a great percentage for every question, we felt it was important to look at the scores a different way so we could account for those neutral selections.
If I could use it as an example, when we start to look at feedback and coaching, at the top of the scale, you've almost always, then you've got frequently, and sometimes. It's good that our teachers are getting feedback sometimes and there's room for growth, but it's not negative. Seven, about 67% said they were coached and provided feedback sometimes. Room for improvement, but not a negative connotation to it.
Okay, thanks.
So if we start with feedback and coaching, again, these are every question. The dark green is most unfavorable, dark blue is unfavorable, neutral is purple, which you'll see is pretty large for each question. Favorable is an orangey color and most favorable is a light blue. So in feedback and coaching, our low score was a 2.8 and our high was a 3.19.
What we're doing with this data is we're beginning to look at it and asking, how are we supporting our principals at the school level and assistant principals in giving feedback and coaching features in the classroom? And this is, of course, baseline data. I love data. It gives us a starting point. It's something that tells us where we are, where we need to go as a system. So for example, in this area, we've been focusing on feedback and coaching for some time, but the data tells us that with all of our teaching and coaching and monthly leadership seminars, we maybe haven't implemented all of our learning completely. In the last four years, we've provided at least one leadership development seminar on classroom observations and instructional coaching. And then we've orchestrated some collaborative observations for principals following that. And we've got a standard protocol. We're going into the classroom to give feedback. And we actually collect all of that data. So for example, this month, we're re-emphasizing feedback and coaching. And all of our building leaders will be in peer groups, going into classrooms, watching teachers teach, coming back out, talking about instruction, and actually practicing what they would say and giving the feedback, instructive feedback to a teacher. So we're taking this baseline data and saying, what do we need to do to make this better next year? And we've already started the process.
And will we be doing the same survey, the same, next year so that we can track?
That would be the plan, yes. And it would be not next year, but the following year. So it would be an every-two-year kind of schedule.
Simply because we do the community one every other year.
With communities in the fall.
And so it'll be a two-year growth period for us.
Another one of the reasons why we picked this vendor is because we could rely on the fact that they're, be there, fingers crossed, and have more benchmarking data as well.
And this was for feelings from the academic year?
Well, it was the end of October, so it could, you know, it could have carried over beginning of this year from last year, but at the end of October to mid-November is the timeframe.
Okay, so it's just important, I think, to note, so Dr. Heron comes onto the, you know, came to us and so it's going to be kind of a nice, a nice benchmarking, I think, to, in two years, that, see, see what we can do.
Resources, there were eight questions. For these first four, the high was question two and the low was question three, 3.53 and 2.92.
This is the one that was not benchmarked?
Not benchmarked. And there are four additional questions for resources. For this one, the low, which is good for us, was how often do your school's facilities need repair? And the high was, for students who need extra support, how difficult is it to get that support? So what our staff members were telling us is they didn't think that it was that difficult for students to receive that support.
I think overall, in the area of resources, we're talking about class size. We're talking about staffing and extra support staff, like reading specialists. There's reference to technology and the condition of facilities. And all of those things are tied directly back to our budget. And so if there are gaps in areas where we need to focus based on the results that we get, then we would look at what the budget would allow us to do to begin to address some of those issues.
And then you can also break this down by school level, so you...
Correct.
So for school climate, there are nine questions. For this first group of five, the low was the question number three and the high was question number five, how respectful are the relationships between the student and students? 3.69. And then on the next four questions, the high was how often do you see students helping each other without being prompted? 3.48. And question eight was the low, of 3.09.
I think overall, the data is encouraging. I think there's always room for growth again. Interestingly, our next presentation this evening will focus very much on some of the things that we are already beginning to do and put in place to address school climate issues. So as we start to talk about this and how to impact climate in our school buildings, the next presentation will really provide some of the beginning steps all the way.
The next strand is school leadership. For these first five questions, the high was how knowledgeable are your school leaders about what is going on in the school? 3.59. And the low was question two. For the next four questions, the high was how clearly do your school leaders identify their goals for the staff? 3.52. We did have a low for question nine of 2.87.
Can I ask a question? It is a statistical question. How significant are some of these differences? I see very small differences between some of these numbers and significant differences among other numbers. And I, I've looked this, I've looked it over and I have found four questions where the mean score was less than three. And all the other questions were at least three or above. So, and I'm a very strong proponent of the whole efficacy for teachers. And the four that I... And the four that I identified are quite similar to ones that have come up in the past. They were even, one or two of them, not the exact same language, but the parent survey that was done a couple of years ago, a couple of years before that, another survey that was done. And they, many of them come back to the decision-making process at our schools, the effectiveness of the feedback to teachers, and how, and how they might improve, that whole empowerment notion of teachers. And I, I, I've watched this, I've kind of watched this over seven or eight years now, and I, you know, and I, I know we have, you know, a lot of emphasis on assessment and instruction, which I totally support, but I, I'm concerned that these same two, three, four areas continue to come up. They continue to be there. I remember the one with the parent survey. Do you feel that your teacher has, I forget exactly what the exact wording was, has that power over his or her instructional decisions, whatever it was? Many parents said, no, I really don't think they have that. So, I'm, and Dr. Heron, I'm so much with you in terms of data, but there aren't, you do have, you know, there are times when we have to tease it. I, I think the other point I would make, and I know I could have made these all at the end, but this, you know, as we're going through this, I don't want to lose sight of those. Some of those differences, I think, are far more significant than other ones, but, and I think the, you know, the, the other part of that, and I mentioned that, you know, I mentioned it to Dr. Heron. I, in terms of the kinds of things we were asking here, climate, I really don't care what the rest of the country's doing. I, and maybe, maybe that was the request that the board made. I don't remember that we needed to have a nationally normed survey. I care more about our teachers and our principals in our school district. And some of the really positive things get washed out when we, when you force things into a normal distribution. And many of those, many of those distributions for the national, they're skewed, which makes, makes our stuff even lower. So I don't want to lose sight of that and, and not be overwhelmed by the numbers that we can't see, that some numbers are actually more important than other numbers. And frankly, I hope we don't use this again, because I really, I don't, we can use it, but I don't care what the rest of the country is doing. I'm more concerned about our own students, I mean, our own teachers. And, and the other thing I would mention is, I, I know on several occasions when a request was made to do a climate survey, that we, I don't, I don't know if everybody felt that, but I know three of us felt that, that the relationship between central office in the schools, principals and teachers, I think that's a really important area, and it wasn't in this thing. And I was disappointed I didn't see that, but I, I can see why it wouldn't be, because it wasn't, wasn't part of that national survey. So, anyway, I, I didn't want to run out of time and not say what I think is important. And I'm not going to do a, you know, a stat 101 thing, but I have lived with that stuff for so long that, that it is important. And, you know, we joke about standard deviation. Well, that is, that is important, because it really says something about those numbers and, and I'm, we're all, we're all sophisticated enough.
Dr. Beers, I just could, could mention, I think, our approach in, in using this is to really take a look at it in a very positive way and to have conversations about the results.
I agree.
And then move forward from there. And it certainly will never be used in any way that's detrimental to our principals and staff.
Yeah.
Because we value them very highly.
No, of course, I know.
And, and I think what it, it just gives us a snapshot of a moment in time.
Gives us some information.
And it's just information, it's just data. And you're right, I think we should focus in on the few, very small number of areas that we can actually make a difference in. But thank you for that.
We also will be taking these questions and seeing if we can correlate them with parent survey results, to see if there are any trends there that we can react to. Thank you for mentioning that. Other questions? These were not included in the strands. These are just questions that we felt it was important to ask. And the high for this one is question number three. How respectful are your school leaders toward you? And that was a 3.93. There are no benchmarks for these questions. So our plans for the future, we're going to follow our current schedule, which is to survey grades six through 12 in the fall, as usual. We also will be conducting another parent and community survey in 2017, 18. We conducted that in the spring, the last time we did it. We might look at fall, just depending on what's going on. And then the staff climate survey would take place in the 18, 19 school year, so fall of 18. I've also provided you with additional charts, so you could see the exact wording of the questions and the answers, since we did most favorable to unfavorable. So you could see where the sum was and the what's. All that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Do board members have any comments or questions, or staff? Mr. Kelly?
Well, I mean, as, as we look at the data, it's disappointing that there, there isn't Virginia benchmark data, because, you know, when you, when you come where education has come in the, in the Commonwealth, and you tend to rich a state, but you pay your teachers at the 30th level, but you expect number one performance out of them, and it's, it would be interesting to see how the Commonwealth's teachers fare in that and how they, how they might feel that they are no longer as valued as they used to be. And I also think it's, it's, you can't lose sight of the panorama approach to the scoring with the, with the two higher, the extremities and the, and the always and not the sometimes. Because, I mean, there's, they have, they have a reason why they're doing it that way, and the reason why they're approaching that data. And we don't, we don't want our teachers to be somewhat satisfied. We want them on the, on the positive end of that. And so I think it's, I think it's important that we look at that, and you really, it's important to compare it to, to benchmarks, and I, it's unfortunately not the Virginia benchmark. It's also important to compare it to, to where you are today versus where you're going to go, and to, and to develop actions, and probably at the building level, and the actions at the building level for how, how you improve that climate. You know, if you have, if you have engaged, engaged teachers who, who are feeling they're in a positive climate, they are going to perform better, they are going to teach better, and they're going to want to be there, and it's, and, and all of that flows. So I, I just want to make sure that we are looking at that as a, from a school-based level, that we are developing plans, that it's in principal evaluations, and that we're, we're looking to, to really take a serious and strong look and address the climates in our schools, to do what we can to improve those climates. That's, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with Dr. Beers, and just the, you know, the, I appreciate the thoughtful analysis that you're putting into this in terms of comparing it to others, but, you know, looking into it a little bit further and not taking it just at face value. I, you know, there's, there's clearly, you know, some opportunity to, as Mr. Kelly said, move the needle, and I, and I look forward to seeing how you all do that. So with that in mind, let's move on to seven, 7.04, Equity Through Engagement. MPSS, and Dr. Heron, if you could introduce that for us first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're delighted to bring you yet another piece of our Equity Through Engagement series, where we talk about multi-tiered systems of support. As you're aware, we've been presenting ways in which we're addressing equity in our schools, and this particular presentation really ties back to some of the conversations we've been having around school climate. And we've got some staff from Student Services to present this this evening, Sarah McCall and Dr. Butler.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and newly appointed Superintendent Dr. Heron. Thank you for that introduction. We're really excited and want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you concerning the Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports Initiative that WJCC schools began exploring in the 2014, 2015 season. A multi-tiered system of support, or MTSS, is a database decision-making framework that supports the academic, behavioral, and social, emotional needs of our students. Essentially, what this means is that it allows us to take a look at what skill sets our students are coming to us with, whether it be academics or behavior, and develop supports and interventions to meet them where they are. It requires us as adults to ask ourselves, are we setting our students up for success or failure? And if we are setting our students up for failure, what are we going to do differently? It's about looking at the reasons why students are functioning the way they are, either with academics or behavior, and putting things into place in order to address that The graphic above illustrates the framework that we use to build those interventions and supports needed for our students to be successful. And I'm going to explain it to you using a medical analogy. We are going to pretend that we are a panel of disease prevention specialists, and we are tasked with keeping the public well in a flu outbreak, which is timely. If we were on that panel, we would most likely start with proactive and preventative measures, like washing our hands, getting plenty of rest, eating a healthy diet, and possibly getting a flu shot. All those proactive and preventative measures that will keep most of us well during an outbreak. When we look at this in terms of MTSS, we're talking about tier one or universal supports. These are things we have in place for all of our students, like school-wide expectations, acknowledgement systems, and clear discipline procedures. And those basic supports are going to work for the majority of our students, just like those proactive and preventative measures are going to keep most of us well during a flu outbreak. But unfortunately, some of us are still going to get sick. And we're going to end up at the doctor because we may have a secondary condition, like asthma, that requires us to need medication or other supports in order to get better. At times, we have students whose needs move to a tier-two level and require additional supports, like social skills groups, targeted small group instruction, or a peer mentor. For most of us, once we have that medicine, we will get better, just like most of our students, when they receive that additional layer of support, will be successful. But for a very few, few of us, that will not be enough, and we have our needs that move to tier three. When you're very sick and medicine hasn't worked, you'll sometimes end up in the hospital, where we can collect very specific data and apply a very specific intervention. This is the same for MPSS. At times, we have students whose needs require intensive and individualized supports. What's great about this process is that we're not starting from scratch, as many of our schools have some of these pieces already in place. Our goal is to provide a framework that allows each school to take a look at what they're doing well and solidify that, as well as fill in the gaps that they identify related to instructional and behavioral supports. While we're looking to build and solidify the supports we have in place across all three tiers of the triangle, our main focus, as we begin implementation, is on building a solid foundation on the behavioral side. We recognize the impact that behavior has on the learning environment, and behavior is the focus of our MTSS process at this time. As we're building that continuum of supports for behavior, the theme is consistency. Consistency involves a common vision, common language, and common practices. What's so powerful, I think, about this process is that that consistency is based in the framework that's provided, but everything else is unique based on the individual school's needs. It allows schools to have conversations around what do they expect from their students and staff, and then how does that unfold across the school day? We ask questions like, how should our students walk in the hallways? How should we be speaking to each other and handling conflict? And what does it mean to really show respect? Some of our leaders recently had the opportunity to, to share some examples of what implementation looks like at their schools, and we're going to share some of that with you now.
It takes ideas and our positions and asks us to take a look at what we're doing as adults, how it affects students. It is a process that involves students, parents, and teachers, administrators, of developing structures, systems to help students.
Having gone through the very deliberate process of defining our expectations and taking it a step further to being very specific by describing what it looks like and what it sounds like from our students' perspective, then we've been able to be more consistent as a learning community, and trying to be very deliberate in involving as many staff members as possible and more accessible during times of training, so that we are constantly being as consistent as we can with what we expect of our students, how we're holding our students accountable, and how we're communicating with our students and our families. We remind our students every day that DJ is a safe place, a caring place, and a learning place, but what exactly does that look like? So we took each of those, those themes, and we described what the behaviors would look like in the classroom, in the cafeteria, at recess, at walk and talk, and we created visuals that are displayed around the school with our mascot, Monty the Mustang, demonstrating for the students what those types of behaviors would look, would look like. It's allowed us to really come together as teams. So I've sat down myself, the counselor, the psychologist in some cases, with the teachers, and with their teams as well, and kind of brainstormed, okay, Johnny's doing this, and he might be doing it because it's attention-seeking. So what are some things we can put in place to kind of avoid those behaviors? So we've been able to have those conversations as a team.
With MTSS, it's a data-driven process. So we looked at a significant amount of data of where behaviors were occurring, where academic struggles were occurring, and from the data, we made decisions based on data. So it's not an emotional thing, it's not a, hey, a shock and approach where we're just trying to hit something. We're really dialing down the data, saying, here's where the behavior's occurring, what are we going to do about it? Here where the academic struggles are occurring, what are we going to do about it? The deficits.
The second important piece was to help the teachers understand the purpose of MTSS. And we want to make sure that we're creating classroom environments for learning where students are safe and that minor disruptions are not taking place. So the, this focus is on tier one, all of the students in the classrooms, and what we're doing to support their behavior. So we have to educate the teachers a little bit on distinguishing between those minor disruptions in the classrooms that they can handle through this system by positively reinforcing the good behavior versus those behaviors that are more disruptive and would require administrative assistance.
Research indicates that schools typically take five to seven years to reach full implementation. Looking at the graphic that's on the screen, you can note that our schools are at the first three phases: exploration, installation, and initial implementation. We currently have no schools who are in full implementation, as we are just beginning the second year of the process. To structure the implementation process, we adopted a comprehensive framework based on guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. As demonstrated in the chart, we formed a WJCC division-level leadership team to facilitate, monitor, evaluate, and coordinate the division-wide implementation process through a series of full-day trainings in the summer and half-day professional development sessions. sessions, we established a core group of building-based MTSS coaches and administrators to facilitate and lead the process at the building level. These coaches and administrators form building-based MTSS teams comprised of teachers, school counselors, and other appropriate staff to engage in dialogue, examine school-based data, and propose interventions to respond to trends in discipline and school climate. The division leadership team reviewed school-based progress with several assessment tools and used this data to adjust trainings and to provide additional support. We wanted to show you a few examples of what products the schools are developing as they move through implementation. Here you see a poster that one of our elementary schools is using to promote positive relationships within the classroom. Students are prompted each day to identify how they wish to be greeted as they enter the school, with a hug, a handshake, a high-five, or hello. The second example is one school's work around promoting a growth mindset in our students. This illustrates how we want our students to apply problem-solving skills to whatever challenge they are facing during the day. This poster is an example of school-wide expectations at the secondary level. They are asking their students to take flight by using focus, leadership, inspiration, global awareness, honor, and tolerance to guide them through their day. Our goal for MTSS is to impact culture and climate in a way that allows our students to maximize their time in the classroom setting. We will be looking at a number of factors in order to determine impact, including student and faculty surveys, minor infractions, and discipline referrals. One of the data points we are required to submit is our division's annual discipline, crime, and violence report. The chart you are seeing displays a three-year comparison of our data. The report represents out-of-school suspensions used at the intervention for violations of our student code of conduct. While several factors have contributed to changes in our discipline data, we believe that the various trainings on function of behavior, the implementation process for school-wide systems of support, and professional development concerning restorative versus punitive disciplinary practices has contributed to last year's data. Moving forward, discipline data will become more readily available through the implementation of a school-wide information system, which is called SWISS, that is being piloted this semester in a few of our schools. This tool will allow school-based teams to analyze data around minor and major infractions and use this information to guide implementation of interventions. Finally, we want to leave you with the voices of our leaders on the impact of MTSS thus far. Each administrator highlights a different aspect of their school and has been impacted by the implementation process.
The culture, remember what, by far, the positive impact it's had on student culture, where they're feeling part of the school. One of the tremendous things that we did is that, one of the complaints you hear sometimes about incentive programs, and this is not really an incentive program, but incentive programs, well, that kid got rewarded for his good behavior, but there was five others that did the same thing. MTSS has a way of recognizing all of the students, and so all the students felt inclusive in the culture that we were building.
One thing that's really been impactful in our school is the teacher conversations. Academics always a focal point. Behavior is now on that same level and caliber in terms of teachers collaborating with each other, having conversations about behavior, what can we do differently, and also being more proactive and preventative.
Teachers are attending the MTSS meetings, and they're coming with some concerns that they have about their students. And they're leaving with a plan for how to address those disruptive behaviors in the classroom so they can focus on teaching and the students can focus on learning. And I think that's a huge piece, that the teachers have a voice, that we're there to support them.
Why are we doing things this way? Is there another way? And it's causing some wonderful conversations, some wonderfully uncomfortable conversations.
I think the students are thinking more about their behaviors and then the teachers feel supported in that they're getting some strategies. They're not just filling out these forms, they're really sitting down and we're looking at them and trying to come up with ways to support them. So I think the teachers are on board and they are buying into the program.
We are using this process as a way to be more reflective and step back from the process more often throughout the school year and think about where we're being successful and where do we have opportunities to strengthen our program so that ultimately every student is the most effective learner here she can be.
We would like to thank you for this opportunity to present this evening.
And if there's any questions or comments from board members, we'd welcome them at this time. Anybody?
I especially like the idea that we're moving towards restorative rather than punitive ways of dealing with student behavior because nothing is harder on a student and a teacher than a child that feels hopeless. So I think that that's very, very positive and I appreciate the fact that you're doing that.
Dr. Beers. No, you.
I'll go.
Dr. Beers. Dr. Beers.
I noticed that a number of the examples that principals and assistant principals gave focused more on behavioral and social-emotional supports, but it also is supposed to include the academic support. And maybe this isn't, you know, the best time, but I'd like to know, you know, how does that fit in and what are we talking about there?
There are like two sides of a triangle. And literally, you've got to build the supports on the academic side, just like the behavioral side. And we do have tiers of intervention on the academic side as well. Tonight, what we've been doing as a system, in MTSS specifically, we've been building the behavioral structure first because we really didn't have anything to focus on building a positive school climate. And this process has really allowed us to work on that and build the kind of climates that we're beginning to see in schools right now. Every school's at a different level of implementation, but I think as we take schools right through to full implementation, we're going to see a change in our culture and climate, which I think will impact some of the results we had earlier tonight.
I guess I had a question about the rollout. And so is this, are all the schools in some point in the continuum of implementing this?
Yes, ma'am. As we shared, typically it takes a school between five and seven years. And so what you have to do is, each school, based on their readiness, because you have to put the structures in place and build infrastructure, we have provided training through the, it's called the Virginia Department of Education Grant. It allows us to do professional development so that we can provide training. We did try to work with our schools, and so when they're ready to move on to the next level, we provide additional support. But we do provide training, we provide coaches for them from our division-level leadership team to try to support our schools and that.
So are all of our schools in some point?
Yes, ma'am. All our schools are in that continuum. Yes, ma'am.
And there were four different levels, and we've got schools on the first three levels. I think we started the first year with six pilot schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we added all schools and brought them into the conversation.
Okay. And then within the pilot schools, it's every teacher? Or is it just, is it school-wide? Like when the school's a pilot, for those schools that were the pilots, every teacher?
It's a school-wide initiative, and I know Dr. Butler could speak to how that happens within a building.
What typically happens is, once you build your, you have to select someone and you're doing, it's going to be the MTSS coach, and that's really like the leader for your team and your building and that administrator. And they work together and they form a team. And usually it's a team of several teachers, a school counselor, and some schools, our school psychologists or social workers are also on that team. And they look at the data for that particular school, and then using that, they interact with the faculty, they'll do presentations, they'll get feedback, they'll work their faculty, see, you know, this is the areas that we're seeing data or concerns, or areas where we can grow. We want some feedback from you so we can frame some interventions or initiatives. And then once they get that data from their colleagues, they go back and then they present something, and then they implement it, they see if it's working, they get data on that, they evaluate it, and then if they need to make some adjustments, they'll do it. And so it's very systematic. And so as they start laying foundations and solidifying what care is shared for Tier One, once they start making sure that they have everything in place and that people are being consistent, that they're using the same language and practices, then they're able to add another part of the scaffolding to their triangle that they're using in the building.
I think when you buy in at the school level and you have everyone creating the expectations, one of the key things that impacts climate in particular is that consistency of language and consistency in what is acceptable behavior and what's not, and how do adults respond to that and how can they bring students up to those expectations? It really is an incredible way to have a school-wide conversation of what school should be like from the behavior standpoint and the academic eventually.
Mr. Kelly?
I think that it's great that it's individualized to each school because the culture and climate of every school is very specific and unique. So I think this is a great approach to recognize that and incorporate that into how we've been using our students and teachers.
Yeah, just one, I guess, third question. At what point, how are students made aware of what you're trying to do in the school so that they see the advantages in terms of how they interact and all those kinds of things? When do they become, or, you know, just be part of this? Because I know you've got the teams and we've got the coordinator, and obviously the major focus is going to be on student behavior. When do they sort of become part of this process?
Depending on how you frame it, most schools, they try to make sure that students are involved as far as their feedback. For example, when you're building your classroom expectations, many schools try to make sure that students tell them, you know, what does it mean to be respectful in our classroom or how do we treat people? And they use the students' words to frame their matrix so that when something happens in the classroom, they will address it at the class to say, you know, well, we all agreed that, you know, this is what it means to be respectful, you know? If they aren't being respectful in the situation, how can we get them to come back into the right place? And the same thing with some of the things we talk about, restorative practices. There are several things that we use in this approach where if someone is not following the consistent expectations, we try to make sure that we restore them back into a good place. Just like we teach academics, we don't always do a good job of teaching behaviors and helping students be able to be stable in the classroom environment. So this really tried to help them.
Does this include dealing with conflict resolution?
There's components to that, yes. We have everything from, some of our restorative practices deal with response circles where you respond to improper behavior, we have the formal conferences where you can bring students and families together to sort out the issues and problems.
Anything else? I just wanted to add, I wanted to thank Ms. McCullough, thank you, and Dr. Butler. I had the pleasure of last summer attending the Governor's Conference on Classroom Support Rooms where I was immersed in this concept for a day and a half. And I was really taken with this sort of no assumptions approach, you know, looking at data to inform your thinking rather than just jumping to a conclusion, not assuming that students have the same perspective that you may have when they walk through your doors. And so building a collective culture of acceptance together, of acceptable behavior, not assuming that it's a student issue, but it might be a systems issue. So the real lack of, the real focus on, let's not make any assumptions. And I think one of the speakers even used the phrase of suicide. And so, which, just, anyway, so I really liked that and I'm struck by it and I find it very compelling. So thank you for the work that you're doing. And I believe that ultimately it will benefit our students and allow them to live up to their full potential as people and as learners. And I think that's really wonderful. So I'm sorry it takes five to seven years, but we're on the right track. That brings us to our policy section. And so I think this is the, is this the first meeting where we brought policies to this year? Yeah. So this is a system that we put in place two years ago. Then Chairman Kelly established the policy committee because the board recognized that there wasn't a regular process to, a systematic plan to provide feedback on policies and to determine their effectiveness, their worth, their legality, and their need to be amended, modified, or canceled, you know, retired. And so policies come through the policy committee to a work session, and then typically, if there's consensus among the board, they go into the consent agenda for the next meeting. So after each one of these, we'll check to see if that's, you know, appropriate for each of these policies. And the first is 8.01, revise and rename policy JEC from admission of resident students to school admission. So Mrs. Taylor, I'm in class of two, and Mrs. Hummel, so.
Hopefully, everyone's had some time to review these changes that we've made as a committee. If there are any questions about this particular policy, Miss McCullough is here to answer those for you.
Or maybe outline the.
Summarize.
Summarize the proposed revisions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We do have quite a few policies coming before you tonight. JEC is being revised, the name is being, the title's being renamed to school admission. That does align with the V S B A naming of this. We've also changed it to match the V S B A language. It addresses any types of considerations for school admission. Examples include military students, homelessness, and many of those factors that can impact the admission process. The enrollment regulations, we have regulations that support this, those are in the process of being revised to match the updated language of the policy. The residence changes for students moving into the division was moved from this policy to J C, which is the next policy we'll be discussing. One of the things we tried to do as we were making revisions is take all those pieces that had to do with school attendance and what school you might attend and put them in one policy rather than having them in three policies the way they are currently. There was also some information in this policy that was outdated. For instance, the requirement of social security, that is no longer part of the admission process. This is a fairly extensive policy. It encompasses a lot of the requirements, and therefore it is longer and broader than a number of our policies, but it does match the V S B A language.
Any questions? So with none, then we'll just move this to the consent agenda for the next meeting. So on to 8.02, revise policy J C, school attendance area.
We have revised this policy. We have embedded some of the V S B A language. We have also revised the exemption requests for consideration. I forgot to mention this from the first one, the attorney has reviewed all of these policies and has approved the changes. In school attendance area, the introductory wording is added to align with the V S B A policy. We have moved information from J C regarding residence changes for students moving into the division. That starts at line 12 and goes to line 27. Also, from policy J E C B, which we will discuss momentarily, we moved the information about the children of students of employees who are non-residents of the division. That is lines 91 to 100. The information for children of employees that live within our division is already within this policy. We did, we've also on line 57, changed the wording from custodial care, because that kind of sounded like you had guardianship, to childcare, because that's really what that was intended to be, and have changed that consideration from K eight to K five since that's where the majority of our requests come from.
Where are you again? What line?
I'm sorry, that was on line 57.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry.
I know it's remaining, if there's any questions.
I think you also did the closest employees, on line 85.
Correct, thank you. Correct, thank you. For the employees, whether it's resident or non-resident, we did put the consideration in there that the request should be for the school closest to where the employee lives.
Mr. Kelly?
On line 87 and line 99, in such instances, shouldn't that go away? Because Virginia High School League regulations govern the students' inter-scholastic participation. So it's always, we don't, we don't trump Virginia High School League, so.
No, we do not.
So where it says in such instances, it's really at all instances. So you really don't even need that phrase.
Yeah, but that's up to the board. We had put, that had been in there. And so we did not take it. We just link up the wording itself. But it was exact. The board took a look at that.
I think you should delete it because Virginia High School League rules all these governments.
And we deleted that from some other, one of the other policies.
We had talked about doing it when we thought it was applying just to K eight.
Oh, okay.
It was really applying K 12. So we did discuss it.
Yeah.
But we ended up leaving it in there.
Let me ask a question about, I see some of the things that are redlined. And I have a concern about this because this is a cost to the school division. It says, "Any student who meets the age and residency requirements of state law shall be eligible for pre-public education." Proof of age and residency, these are things that have been redlined. So are we not requiring any form of proof now when a student enters, comes to school to register?
That's, that's all addressed in the previous policy J E C for school admission. The very lengthy policy J E C.
That's what I'm looking at, is the J E C. What they did is they took that school attendance areas, and if it was, and they have it just in the school admission part. It's not gone. It's just. It's not gone. It's just in its appropriate.
Spot.
Spot. So what you were talking about is all, you know, all the underlying information on pages two, three, on.
On the J E C policy.
On the school admission, the.
Isn't that what I'm looking at, that power?
Sure.
Never mind, I'll get it from the.
You're looking at, look back and look at the policy that we did.
No, I am looking at that policy, the J E C policy.
The, the, in school admission one?
Because I mean, first of all, they no longer have a federal social security number.
If you look at line 111.
On the J E C.
That might provide more.
Thank you.
So, so are you, are we all good on that piece? So we're gonna, does everybody agree to remove that V H S L, those few words, that phrase, in such, in such?
Just the in such, in such.
In such.
There's two, I saw two, two of them.
So you just want those three words taken out?
Yeah.
And the remain go to. So, Ms. Boujwa, I was in reading this, so it looks to me like the only exceptions then to go to another school if you're K five or clearly for childcare. But what would the exceptions be for middle or high school? And is that just up to the superintendent to make that decision? And what are those exceptions?
The main, the majority of requests that we get are actually from the employees. And so those would still apply.
We don't, but, but what, but what would those be? So it's not clear to me.
Employee requests, they, they get to request that because they are employees.
No, I'm not talking about employees. So if some other parent requests that they're middle school or go to a different middle school, how is that handled?
The majority of those right now, when they happen, are really worked through with the principal because of the space availability. We very rarely approve anything as an out-of-zone process that is a special request type of situation. The majority of those have been redlined over the past couple of years because of space available. So if there's a really extenuating situation that the principal has been working with the family on, and there is a need for a very specific reason to consider something, we will look directly with the principal.
My question is a little more pointed, but I think it's. Do we know, how many students, I'm talking about at the high school level, what students, I probably, I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask the question. How many Lafayette students had left for War Hill? How many War Hill students had moved over to Lafayette, you know, Jamestown, wherever it might be? And the reasons for that? And the other thing, because this came up last year, and it's come up, actually, it was bubbling up the year before, is the whole notion that extracurricular activities or athletics, it's not supposed to be a valid reason for wanting to go from one school to, to another. Have we ascertained how many kids who went from one high school to another high school actually ended up on an athletic team or in the band, things like that? Because I, I'm, I, you know, I know there has been some irregularity with that. And I know part of the problem, that the challenge is how do you verify if parents are actually going to do something that is incorrect? How do you verify that they, that they actually don't live there? Because I think that's, it continues to be a challenge. And I just think that in order to monitor that, again, you gotta look, let's look at the data. Let's, you know, let's, let's see how many guys, you know, who went to Lafayette were on the football team now? Because you can't, that can't be a reason given. Or how many, how many gals are at, you know, the War Hill volleyball team? And I know it's epidemic. You know, I know this is a major problem and challenge, not, you know, all across Virginia, really across the country. And very often it deals with athletics. My feeling either is if we can't enforce it, you know, let's forget about it. Or if it is happening, then what can we do to really enforce it? That's all. And I don't know if, because I, I remember that you, Tab, you got some data together last, last year. And I, I looked at it over, and, and the numbers are kind of interesting to look at, especially at the high school level. But we never really did know or find out, well, okay, of all those kids, how many of them are on athletic teams?
We can certainly provide you some data, again, as the number of students who apply or either accepted or denied, and some of the rationale behind that. And I know, Ms. Boujwa, in her department, they keep a really good record of all the modifications that are made. And we can certainly provide that to you before the next, the next meeting.
And I guess just to follow up to that, and that's what I'm getting at. So, so historically, the practice has been, if you want to go to a different high school, primarily, I should use that example, instead of middle school, you just go to the principal and say, I want to come to this school. And the two principals sign off.
No, I'm sorry.
So is that, that's, that has happened. So it's, that's not happening now?
The, the process has been, one of the considerations, and you will see on line, on line 35 and 36, part of what is being deleted is exemptions will only be granted in extraordinary circumstances. So traditionally, we would get a number of requests for any variety of reasons to attend. The majority of those have been denied, quite honestly, through our office. And if it, if, if it was clearly stated that it was to participate in some sort of extracurricular activity, that was automatically denied. So out-of-zone has not been a conduit to participation.
Or a school-based decision?
That, that is the first step in the process. What I was referring to earlier, literally something outside of out-of-zone. For instance, if, if we have really worked with a student's family, a school has been working with a student's family about a situation that is creating a great deal of anxiety for that student, and there's something about that school, or a piece of, something connected to the school that's been a real roadblock for that student, and we've tried different things and we haven't been successful. If a principal comes to me and says, I think this student would do better and feel, be more successful at another school, then we'll look at that. But as far as the out-of-zone process, it's, especially at the high school, it's really, there's not a lot of opportunity, you know, quite honestly, for students that we try to honor their requests. And even some of those were denied this year.
And a report is sent to the board every year with the number of requests and whether they're accepted or denied. And so that's, that's. Is the requests are still routinely happening?
The numbers have decreased.
Okay. However, now with our new innovation grants, folks will have an opportunity to pick the high school that they go to, more or less.
They will have a chance to apply and part of the consideration.
Those rising ninth grade students.
Yeah, I think the opportunity will be there, but not unrestricted, because they're starting with the pilot program, depending on who they reach school. And that will be on a monthly basis. So if someone is applying, and it's not really for the innovation program, it's more for the athletic program, we wouldn't know that when they apply for the, for the to go to a different school in ninth grade, and just ninth grade, what other students.
And it's a lottery.
Yes. There was a lottery system used in place last year, but it wasn't used because we just get the number.
So we're gonna talk about what that will look like as we move into three schools offering different programs.
It just becomes a loophole. It could become a loophole.
But not for this policy? I mean, is there a change we need to make to the policy as a.
No, I have a question about, we, we struck on line 37, "Application for an exemption shall first be made to the superintendent." And then we didn't strike the next one that said, "If the parent guardian is dissatisfied with the decision of the superintendent or designated."
We left that in because it does come through a department here, but we could.
But you see what I mean?
Right. I do understand what you're saying.
So I don't, I don't know what we do with that sentence. What do we?
We can adjust the wording.
Adjust the wording. And then I guess, a question I have, because, yes, I agree, the loophole situation doesn't pertain to this. It's just something we all should be aware, aware of, is the actual, I'd like to know, and maybe Ms. Berta can give me this information at some point, how much money do we spend on the, the education of children of employees of the W J C C school division that do not reside in our zone or in our district that we are educating?
So how much tuition do we forego?
Tuition, do we forego?
Whose students, whose kids are not normally W J C C students?
Right. Who do not reside in the W J C C district.
There are, there are 56 of those students this year.
So 56, and then are, are out-of-zone, like for anyone else that lives like in Surrey that would want to come to school here, it would cost them how much money?
Ten. No, it's a hundred. It's not so much as nine thousand.
Okay. So we're about a half a million. So it's just something to just keep in, as we're going, something to keep in mind.
Those majority, majority K through five?
It goes across, I can get you those numbers.
That'd be interesting.
As part of the budget discussion, that'd be helpful. That's a piece of information. I have a question about the school board, the appeal decision in writing to the board. What line are you on? I'm sorry, 3940, 4142. So if, so this, if I read it correctly, anyone who's not happy with the decision could appeal to us, and that we would have to respond in 30 days? Is that a requirement?
Nope. None of this is part of the SBA. This is part of a.
So other school systems?
Option.
So, so other, V S B A has no due process for people who aren't happy with their out-of-zone requests?
If you look at the V S B A policy, it's two paragraphs long.
So I mean, it may be a recommendation, like I may consider, like I really don't want to be dealing with.
I would rather support the decision of the administration and not.
I mean, part of our procedures.
Not offer an appeal process that goes to the board, especially for the 30-day.
Fine with that.
I mean, in two years, I've never seen one of them.
Seven years, I've never seen one.
So.
Anyone else?
Don't want to see one.
I don't want to see one yet.
So is the recommendation that we strike that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any issues with that? Problems with that?
So do we want this to go on consent, or do we want to see it as a separate action item on the next meeting? So that, because we've made some adjustments up to this one. So what's the will of the board?
Could it be sent out prior?
It would be on board docs.
Yeah.
And anyone can pull it from consent if there's an issue. All right. Okay. So we'll pull it, we'll put it on consent. If someone's got a concern, you can pull it. Excellent. Now that, Warren, 8.03, revise and rename policy J E D from student absences and excuses to student absences, excuses, and dismissals.
For this policy, we did make some revisions. It, we eliminated, we modeled it after the V S B A policy. We have eliminated a number of procedural items. Those are, procedures are maintained in the school handbooks, and they might vary a little bit from school to school. So we did take those out. But the majority of wording that you see is modeled after the V S B A policy.
All right. 8.04, retire policy J E C B, admission of non-resident students.
For this policy, we're recommending that it be retired. It doesn't match the V S B A version of J E C B. All of this information either is found in another policy or is procedural in nature. The first portion of it is found in J E C. The non-resident employees, children part that starts on line 53, we've just talked about, it was moved to policy J C. And the exchange students is done by procedure.
Any questions? That'll also be moved to consent. 8.05, retire policy J E C D, assignment of students to classes.
And for the same reason, this is being recommended to be retired. The first section is covered in J E C about entering school for the first time. The section 21 through 77 is really covered under policy I K E, which has to do with acceleration or retention and working with the school principal as far as placing those students.
Questions? And then that brings us to 8.06, retire policy J E F, release time for students.
For J E F, there is no matching V S B A policy, and the release time information has been added to J E D, student absences, excuses, dismissals. So we'll add that to the policy that's already mentioned.
Any questions? Excellent. So we'll go ahead and put that on consent next meeting as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boujwa, and then Ms. Hummel.
I missed the policy. So that brings us to board, board matters and requests of board members, comments 10.01. Does anyone have anything to say? Ms. Yellen, do you have?
Yes, I want to congratulate Dr. Heron.
Yes, I want to congratulate Dr. Herron, or as I was notified, she could concur to Dr. Owen, which I did myself, but I want to congratulate her as being our superintendent. I feel it's an excellent choice for this division and I think it's going to, we're going to see the school division move forward, so I'm very happy about that. I want to thank the cabinet for all of their hard work tonight. There was lots of things and a lot of information and I appreciate their time. Also, I want to thank the policy committee. That's, that's a fun committee. I'll leave it at that.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, first of all, I am so happy to be back in my familiar spot and I want to thank so many of those people out there for their, I won't say condolences, but in cards and letters and emails. I am on the road to recovery and I just sling, if I behave myself, will be permanently removed in about five to six weeks, so I'm glad to be back. I too very much would like to congratulate Dr. Herron for accepting our invitation to be our next superintendent. I, I very much look forward to working, working with you as well.
Ms. Zombi, anything to say?
Well, I have to say congratulations too and I'm very excited to have Dr. Herron lead our division. I think you'll be a phenomenal leader. Just wanted to remind folks that CAC is having a meeting this Thursday at six thirty. It's open to the community at the Rec Center. And if folks are not aware, we have an annual high school student art show. I think it's, it's the fourteenth year running and it's at a new location for Williamsburg Contemporary Art, Art Center, Art Center, yeah, Williamsburg Contemporary Art Center. I think it did move, so it's on Westover Avenue, one ten. So I had an opportunity to go and, and view our students' art, so it includes all of our, all of our high schools and also, also private schools. But we have some really talented artists in our school division, so if people have an opportunity to, to check that out, I would encourage them to do that. And then for parents, just to remind them that coming up next week, I think the following week, there'll be opportunities for parents to learn about curriculum. There'll be parent curriculum information fairs at the middle and high school level because it's time to start planning classes for next year for folks who have rising middle school, rising high school. It's an exciting time.
Mr. Kelly.
I'd just like to, a couple of congratulations to throw around. One is to B W P. They, they had thirty one applicants from sixteen states. They vetted our superintendent candidates fully and completely and they sent us four finalists, which we interviewed, which I think any of those four would have been very fine superintendents. Dr. Herron came through all of that on her own merits. There was no home cooking there, if you, if you, if you, can I put it that way? And she, she very much distinguished herself from certainly the thirty one, but also from the four. So congratulations, Dr. Herron, for, for that. And I'd also like to congratulate the board. Good work in coming through the process, evaluating all of the candidates. The interviews I thought were exceptional and, and very thoughtful consideration and I think that the, the board did a great job in reviewing all of that and coming through that process. So I just want to, want to acknowledge that and once again, congratulations, Dr. Herron.
Ms. Hummel?
I also want to think outside the box and say congratulations to Dr. Herron. I think it's important for everyone to know that the vetting process that we went through with choosing a new superintendent was very, very deliberate. I think an easy route for all of us would have been, oh, we like Dr. Herron, yeah, let her be our next superintendent. It's very, very important for all of us and for the community here to know that this search process in my mind really legitimizes the decision that was made to make you our superintendent. It, it was not a, a brash decision that we made. We had excellent, excellent candidates and as Mr. Kelly said, any one of them were, they were fine, fine candidates that I think speaks really highly of our school system, that, that they came and they were interested and really wanted to work here. You measured right there with them and above them. I mean, it was like one of those situations where all of us knew this was the right decision to make for our school system and I think the vetting process is really an important part of that for everyone in the school system. So I just wanted to say that.
Taylor?
I'm like a broken record.
Congratulations, Dr. Herron.
We're very glad to have you. And thank you to everyone who's been with us and thank you to the, to share public comment with us. We really appreciate that.
Welcome. That's all I'm gonna say. Anybody else? That brings us to item eleven point zero one, upcoming events. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February eighth, in room three hundred, is that right, here at James Flair, at eight forty five to nine-ish sort of, Dr. Herron will be taking her oath of office, so to announce that. Several board members will be there to join that festivity. On the ninth is the, of February this month, it's the Special Education Advisory Committee that Ms. Zombi mentioned, which is in the J C C Community Center on Long Hill Road at six thirty P M. And on the fifteenth of this month in February, Policy Committee meets at four P M. in room three oh nine here at the James Flair Annex. So any, did I miss any other upcoming events that I should mention? And then that brings us to upcoming meetings. On the twenty first of February, we have a closed session at six o'clock at the Stryker Center and followed by a regular meeting at six thirty, also in the Stryker Center. On the seventh of March, we've got a closed session at six here in James Flair Annex, room three oh nine, followed by a six thirty public hearing on the proposed operating budget in room three hundred here in the Annex, followed then immediately, again, on the seventh of March, by our work session and action items. So. And then item twelve point oh one, agenda items set for the next regular meeting. On the consent agenda, we've got banned uniforms, our policies that we discussed, our regular financial reports, and I think a couple of resolutions are coming our way. We will take action on the appointments to the advisory committees, the naming of Ralsburg Elementary, and we will also hear about your, your proposed budget. Very exciting, year first. And then we will have at some point before or after, Christina.
CFO was very.
Very supportive, yeah. And then that's before or after we're looking at Ms. Taylor to convene a meeting of the James City County School Board. With that, meeting adjourned.